Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, March 2nd, 2015. I'd ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in our regular session, we just ask for direction and guidance and vision as we act on the various items of business before us. As always, we are ever mindful that our community is an ongoing and growing community with many challenges and opportunities facing it, and we just hope that the City Council has given enough vision and understanding so that we may act in support of our town and make it a greater and better town than it already is. As always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask a special blessing to be showered upon them as they go about their fateful duties of defending the liberties of the United States of America. As always, we just ask for direction in knowing that we are here to do the very best we can in our minds and hearts to serve our community in a very special way. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Alderman, ATAC, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
ATAC.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Alderman Fisher is absent. O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Homan.
Here.
Alderman Sam is absent. Alderman Saron is absent. McFadden.
Here.
At the moment, we have ten Aldermen present, so we obviously have the necessary quorum to conduct business. I am told that Alderman Fisher may be calling in. He had indicated that to me, but he's not on the phone yet, so we'll have to entertain that motion when and if he calls in. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Stark, do you have anything to say?
I believe we can delete the executive session, number 14.
Okay. Anything else? Can I make a motion for the approval then of the agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Move Alderman Stark, second of all, on ATAC for the approval of the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark. ATAC.
Aye.
Motion for approval, the agenda is approved. Ten yes, no no's, four absent. Three absent and one vacant. Okay, moving to item number five, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Stark, would you present this, please?
I will. The consent agenda reads as follows: We accept and place and file the Committee of the Whole minutes for February 3rd, 2015; the tree commission minutes for June 11th and October 15th, 2014; and the following approvals: The February 27th, 2015 payroll in the amount of $707,653.16; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,911,083.3; the City Council minutes for February 2nd, 2015; the Resolution 15-22-R, accepting the quitclaim deed for parcel one in the Stonefield Unit One subdivision; Resolution 15-27-R, approving the final plan of P2 Estate subdivision Hickory Lane at Rosewood Lane, Incorporated Batavia Township; Ordinance 15-8, authorizing execution of a quitclaim deed for land behind 122 West Wilson Street; Ordinance 1509, authorizing execution of a warranty deed for land at 130 West Wilson Street; Ordinance 15-10, amending the text of the zoning code. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Move Alderman Stark, second of all, Alderman McFadden for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark. ATAC.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Ten yes, three no's, one vacant. All right.
Oops, three absent.
Did I say three absent? I'm sorry, three no's. All right, moving then to item number six. It's with great honor this evening that we are going to now take part in the official oath of office of newly appointed Alderman Kevin Botterman, but before we do that, I have been advised by the City Attorney that, as you know, we went through the interview process, and then each of you voted on the two candidates, and we selected Mr. Botterman in that vote, but I am told to make it official, we need a motion and second from the City Council, and then we need to vote on my appointment of Mr. Botterman as the new Fifth Ward Alderman, replacing Alderman, former Alderman of the Cillian.
I move that we accept your appointment of Kevin Botterman as Fifth Ward Alderman.
Second.
Move Alderman Stark, second of all, Alderman Chansett for the approval of Kevin Botterman to be appointed as the Fifth Ward Alderman. I just want to say before we do that, that I think last Tuesday night certainly was a high mark for us as the City Council, because I felt that we had two extremely very qualified candidates apply for this job in the presence of Mr. Botterman and Mr. Foster, and that it certainly showed the quality and the interest and the dedication and commitment of a number of citizens who really are willing to step forward and offer their services in what can be, as all of us know, a very challenging role as being an Alderman of this Batavia City Council. So, Kevin, you've been appointed, so if you would come up, if you want to bring your wife. Oh, excuse me. Excuse, hold on just a second. I got to, we got to take a roll call, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark. ATAC.
Aye.
Okay, now, motion's approved. Ten yes, three absent, and one vacant for the moment. We are honored tonight to have Mr. Botterman here with his wife Lori, and if you two would like to come forward, we'll get you up here in the, we'll get you in the camera here. So, if I can get you to stand right there, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Kevin Botterman."
"I, Kevin Botterman."
"Having been appointed."
"Having been appointed."
"To the office of Fifth Ward Alderman."
"To the office of Fifth Ward Alderman."
"In the city of Batavia."
"In the city of Batavia."
"In the counties of Kane and DuPage."
"In the counties of Kane and DuPage."
"Do soundly swear."
"Do soundly swear."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of Illinois."
"And the Constitution of the State of Illinois."
"And I will faithfully discharge the duties."
"And I will faithfully discharge the duties."
"Of the office of Fifth Ward Alderman."
"Of the office of Fifth Ward Alderman."
"To the best of my ability."
"To the best of my ability."
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
(applause) Alderman Botterman, I would certainly invite you to make any opening remarks if you'd like to, or we generally do that if newly appointed Alderman.
Well, thank you, and just to say thank you to everyone, and I'm excited to get to work, so that's all I'll say tonight. Thank you.
I guess we, yeah, the City Clerk has advised that probably with the new Alderman being seated, we should retake a new roll call, so we can reflect that in the record. So, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
ATAC.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Alderman Fisher is absent. O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Homan.
Here.
Alderman Sam is absent. Botterman.
Here.
Alderman Saron is absent. McFadden.
Here.
Okay, we now have eleven present, three absent. All right, so we have even a better quorum. So, moving then to item number seven, which is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? All right, item number eight is the monthly minute from the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, and Holly Dekman, the Executive Director, is here. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. This month, I'd like to just remind everybody a little bit about what the Chamber does. We're very active in the business community, trying to gather businesses together that are like-minded individuals, so we have several forums, whether that be for, from the home-based businesses, not-for-profit executive directors, all the way up to our industrial site managers. I was very thankful to have the mayor and city administrator at our last industrial site manager meeting, and they were able to discuss openly with each other a lot of issues that are arising and successes that have recently taken place in the industrial parks. So, thank you very much for partnering with the Chamber and that relationship development with those businesses. There's three things that we focus on, and we like to call them our R, which is advocacy, relationships, and education. Those are three major categories of benefit that fall with a Batavia Chamber of Commerce membership. And on the advocacy side, I actually met today downtown Chicago with the Small Business Advocacy Council. They're, again, trying to advocate for small businesses. They're another not-for-profit, and learned a lot from what they have to offer and some of the things that they're fighting for right now in Springfield. One of them is lowering LLC fees to encourage the growth of new and smaller businesses, and also an interstate equity crowdfunding. So, if you think of crowdfunding as in going online and donating $20 to somebody to help start up a project that they are working on, this would actually be to help fund a new business. So, you would become somewhat of an equity partner and potentially in the growth of that venture that was coming on. So, that's something that they're fighting for right now, is kind of some regulations around that type of crowdfunding. The second, in relationships, we hold a monthly free and open networking event. It's called Networking It. We typically hold it at local bars and restaurants. This month, on March 18th, we'll be meeting at Crosstown Pub. That's free and open. Anyone can come to it and learn a little bit about some of the other businesses that are in our community and see one of our new businesses. So, Crosstown Pub is hosting us on March 18th. On the education front, we have our educational seminar series that we have a monthly event that we bring together businesses to learn on a topic. This year, we've partnered with Wabonzi Community College, and they're bringing to us their subject matter experts. This month, we are focusing on marketing, so the topic is establishing your brand. So, we get somewhere between 20 and 30 small business owners into a room, and they learn something that will hopefully propel them into the next level of their business. We also have Eggs Benefit, which we do quarterly, and that's to bring members and potential and prospective members in together to learn about the benefits of Chamber memberships. So, again, that's a free event that we host here locally to get people in the same room together. A thing that I would like to invite all of you two, as members of the Chamber, under the City of Batavia, on Tuesday, March 24th, we will be partnering with the St. Charles, Sugar Grove, and Geneva Chambers to do a multi-chamber Kane County update luncheon. Please register on our website if you're interested in hearing from County Board Chairman Chris Lausen on some of the state of our county. We also have, as hopefully you have already heard, on the March 26th, we, or March 25th, I'm sorry, we have the School Board Candidate Forum that we'll be hosting at the library that's open to the public and members of the Chamber to come and learn from all eight of the candidates for these three open school board seats. So, please join us for that event. We are still working with the City at this point to get all of the, not only those that are being reset in their positions or uncontested seats here at City Council. We're trying to put together a candidate forum for that as well, and more of an information panel that you can present some of your topics outside of this room to our members as well, and we're hoping to do that on Wednesday night, March 25th, 20, I'm sorry, Thursday the 26th. So many dates. But, other than that, we're keeping very busy at the Chamber. We just brought on a new marketing and membership coordinator. Very excited to have Margaret Peralta join us now, and she'll be out in the community advocating for the Chamber and trying to encourage more membership in our organization. We're approaching 300 members at this point, and a year ago, we were at 280. So, we are seeing growth over the past year, and we're really excited to continue to move forward in the year to come.
Any questions in the Chamber? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we were going to have an item number nine, but I am told that Catherine Chansett, who is with Water Street Studios, has a program she wanted to talk about. Bill, you going to talk about this, or?
No, she's going to.
She's not going to be able to make it, last I know. All right. We'll move then to the Administrator's Report. Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. Number one, on behalf of the staff, we certainly want to welcome Kevin to the City, and we're committed to try and make your stay here as productive as possible. You'll get tired of us pretty quickly, I imagine. We'll set up the usual tours for you. It'll take several weeks. Our biggest operation is to get you linked into the electronic system tomorrow, so I've asked you for some information. We'll have I.S. contact you. I'll also give you some other information. I guess I'll segue into Metro West, which is our Council of Governments. I want to remind everybody again that we do have the, our annual legislative drive-down on April 29th and 30th, where we go down to Springfield with other elected officials and talk with our legislators. It should be a very interesting time this year. Metro West held its legislative breakfast last Tuesday morning, and several of you were there. I think we had eight or nine of the local legislators, and I think they understand how difficult things are going to be for everyone down there. They all believe that they'll be there till a good part of the summer to try and resolve some of the issues, but I think there's some very serious issues about our ability to retain our rightful portion of the local government distributive fund, and so we'll be working on that, and that's another reason to go on the drive-down. Tomorrow, if you recall, every Tuesday morning at 10 o'clock, there's a brief siren, sounding of the sirens, to make sure that they're all working. That's part of the, you know, regional statewide tornado drills. Tomorrow is a special one. It's a statewide drill, and so you'll be hearing the sirens for a full seven minutes, so if you can, don't be worried about that. They're just really, I guess, trying to clear the bugs out of the sirens, but that's tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. As has been our practice, we've offered empty office space to our local state legislators. Most of them, or some of them, would like to have an office here. It just makes visits for about two hours a month, and new Representative Steve Anderson is also accepting this invitation. His first set of, or at least his staff's office hours will be here, will be next Wednesday. That's March 11th, 10th, yeah, no, the 11th, I'm sorry, from 10 to 12. And you can, if you'd like to have anything to say, get a message to Representative Anderson. Just come to City Hall, see our receptionist on the second floor, and she will get you to see his staff person, and that, they're going to see how that goes, and it may be one Wednesday a month. We've been approached by several of our local businesses seeking some, I might say, relief or some, maybe some creativity, or some entrepreneurship, a different way to look at our liquor codes. The mayor's been very active in holding some discussions with our police chief and City Attorney Drundle, and some of our business people, including Main Street and the Chamber, and I believe that the mayor's asked the staff to come before the Cow a week from tomorrow night and discuss some of these issues that some of the businesses have brought up, so that will be, should be a good conversation. I think, as I mentioned last Tuesday, we reached a tentative agreement with three of our collective bargaining units. We're working, Gary Holm, very diligently on the, filling the Assistant Public Works Director/City Engineer position. Some of the final interviews are going on today and tomorrow, and we're also making progress on the HR Director, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions, the City Administrator?
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of meetings to announce. Tomorrow night at 7:30, the Committee of the Whole is going to meet on that agenda, Community Development, has two items. First one is the Land Cash Ordinance that we've been talking about for a couple of months now, and the other one is the 2015 zoning map update. Next meeting to announce is Plan Commission. That's at 7:30 on March 4th. On their agenda, and one of the items is the variance on 702 Millview Drive. And then lastly, Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet March 9th at 5:30. I don't have what's on their agenda yet, but we always have a meeting. So, that's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Any questions? Public Utilities, Alderman Clark.
Looking at tomorrow night's agenda, there's one item for Public Utilities, and it's the water meter purchase. We've been gradually purchasing water meters to replace the ones all over town, so that's the only thing I see as of right now for Public Utilities. Thank you.
Administrative Services, Alderman Stark.
Tomorrow night at the Cow, we will be discussing budget transfer reconciliation, and on the 10th, we'll be talking about the public meeting booklet, collective bargaining, and liquor code. So, if you have ideas about the public meeting booklet, you can send them on to Mr. McGrath so that he can maybe incorporate some of the Council's ideas prior to the meeting. That's all I got.
City Services, Alderman Wolf.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night's Committee of the Whole meeting, we have forestry issues, downtown banners, master engineering agreements, I.D.O.T., road closures, and road maintenance agreement. And then on March 10th, we don't have anything on the agenda.
Okay, anybody on the Council, any other business you want to bring up? All right, I've got a couple of things I'd like to just talk about for just a couple of minutes under the mayor's report. First of all, as all of you know, I serve as the Chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plantings, Council of Mayors, representing the whole region, and in that perspective, I serve on the State Transportation Policy Committee, which, on an annual basis, the last few years, we've distributed between $160,000 and $185,000 million throughout the region. Recently, last week, we had a meeting where we distributed the congestion mitigation air quality federal funding for the region, and this is specifically money that the federal government pumps into areas which have high pollution air issues, and they are looking for projects that will hopefully lessen congestion in the roads and highways and whatever. I'm very pleased to report that Kane County submitted a couple of projects for this year for consideration, both of which got funded in this year's program, and I just want to share with you what they are going to be, because I think you will see some construction in our, around, inner and around our town as a result of these. The first one that got funded last week is the rebuilding of the intersection at Nelson's Lake Road and West Main Street, and there, the idea there is, I'm sure everybody's familiar, as you're heading west on Main Street and you approach Nelson's Lake Road, which is only a left-hand turn at that particular location, you start backing up traffic if somebody's waiting to turn there. So, the intersection improvement includes a designated turn lane that's going to be put into that intersection, which will allow traffic that wants to go west on Main Street to continue to go west. They are also, when you get to, if you're coming up Nelson's Lake from the south and you come north, and you get to Main Street, the intersection there is kind of clustered or cluttered. There's not great visibility, and so they're going to kind of open that up, and they're going to put in some designated right turn lanes and a left turn bay there so that opens it up, kind of moves some stuff back, takes some brush and that out of the area so that as a result, that becomes a much clearer intersection, because there has been an accident history at that particular intersection. Further west on Main Street, now, this wasn't included in this year's funding package, but the county told me today that they are performing what we call Phase One Engineering, which is the studying and the actual design of an intersection improvement that they want to do in the next several years out at the intersection of Fabian Parkway and Main Street, where we kind of have, Bliss Road comes in at one location on Main Street from the south, and Fabian Parkway comes in from another location, kind of coming from the north. And what they want to do is basically take Fabian Parkway across Main Street with a traffic signal at Fabian Parkway in Maine, and then drop it to kind of, in the field there, going south from Main Street, and put it into Bliss Road, and then that'll be, Bliss Road will be redirected, so it will come into Main Street at a location east of where it currently comes into, and that, so that they think that will be a much greater safety enhancement, because right now, you've kind of got like a double intersection there. Now, that one's not going to happen this year, but they are doing the engineering for it, so hopefully that gets done. The other thing that we got approved last week, I'm very pleased about this, is the county got approved their Douglas Road-Kirk Road intersection project, and that is going to be fully funded now. Douglas Road at, this is right in front of Aldi grocery stores, corporate headquarters on Kirk Road. Right now, if you're heading north on Kirk Road and you want to turn onto Douglas, you have a hard time doing it, because there's no turn bay, and you're sitting out in the middle of Kirk Road. So, the intersection improvement that was approved last week is a designated turn lane, which will stack the traffic that wants to turn left on Douglas going north on Kirk, and the two lanes of Kirk Road will continue to drive by you. They are also going to go over on the front of Aldi's, and there is, there's been a gated driveway there that many of you may have seen. The gate's going to come down, and they're going to rebuild that so that Aldi's parking lot will have a right out only going northbound on Kirk Road, which a lot of their traffic doesn't want to go that way, but it will take them kind of out of the mix of coming all the way back down and then going through this Douglas Road thing. They're also going to extend this turn base so that C&amp;F Forge, which is again right on the northwest corner of that intersection, they will be partner of this designated turn base. So, there's been, again, some accident history there, because you're kind of coming around the curve, going down a little hill incline at that point. So, the county was very pleased to get both of those particular improvements in. The other thing that got funded last week, while it's not in Batavia, I think it may have some impact on Batavia residents, was the Metro train station over at Route 59, just north of Fox Valley, is now going to have a designated lane coming right off of Route 59 into the train station, and they're going to further expand the train station at that location as far as parking, because the Fox Valley Metro train station there on the Burlington line has now become the busiest metro drop-off and pickup point in the entire system outside of the Ogilvy and Union Station locations in downtown Chicago. More people arrive and, you know, take away from that particular metro station than any place else in the entire metro system. So, there's going to be some significant improvement in that particular intersection. So, I think those are all good things. I know we have people from Batavia who use that train station. I think you do, don't you, Alderman McFadden?
No.
Saron does.
Saron.
Saron does, okay. So, I know we have folks that do use that, so I thought Batavia got some positive spin out of that happening. I want to talk for just a moment about the discussion you're going to have next week at the Cow meeting about the liquor hearing. We discussed this amongst the mayors and administrators. Last Thursday night, we had a meeting down in Oswego, and this was discussed. What's happened is, is that the State of Illinois has passed statute that now prohibits any business from just giving away alcohol if that business is open for business. So, in other words, if you go into a dress shop and somebody says, "Well, you're shopping for your dress. We're going to give you a bottle or glass of wine to sip while you're walking around looking at the wine." Can't do that unless you got a liquor license. Or if we've had people that want to put beer, wine giveaways in barber shops and beauty shops, you can't do it unless you have a liquor. Any place that's, can no longer, you can't give liquor away in a business without having a license. So, one of the things that we've been meeting about with the Chamber and Main Street and the staff is how we get everybody in Batavia in compliance, not get anybody in trouble, keep them out of trouble, but again, not put a big cost on to them. So, we're going to recommend that the city fee for this permission to give away liquor in your business is going to be a very low fee. Now, where we think some of this is coming from, this may be a little bit of a revenue generator for the State of Illinois. They're very interested in, because they get a liquor fee for every liquor license Again, depending on what you're doing in your business, the state of Illinois sends you a bill for a license, and so this is gonna be another state license fee that they're gonna be able to impose on a whole bunch of folks. And apparently, this law's been around for a couple of years, but it's only been recently that, and several cities noted this, we have began to see the state liquor inspectors coming around looking at this particular activity. So we're trying to keep everybody out of trouble here before somebody gets into trouble with this. So that's the idea behind it, and the city attorney and the police department's gonna be here next Tuesday night to go over all the steps, and I think we've gotten pretty widespread consensus from the business community, at least from the Chamber and Main Street, that they feel we're working with them and we're trying to do this the right way. The other thing I'll just share, and I guess this is not necessarily city business, but it's more of kind of a little piece of community news, two weeks ago Saturday on the 21st of February, we had quite a bit of television coverage going on in Batavia, but not many people were aware of it. And what was happening is, we had Home and Garden TV here. Now, that's, they have their own channel, Home and Garden, and they have a TV program called Travel, or no?
House Hunters.
House Hunters, that's it, House Hunters. And we had a couple from Batavia that lived down in, I guess, Harville Farms subdivision on Pheasant Run, or Green Pheasant. They got a transfer to go to the hills of northern Italy for a three-and-a-half-year period. So instead of selling their house, they have rented their house, and they have moved to northern Italy. And what is now happening is, is that they are over there getting indoctrinated into their new living, but this Home and Garden program is kind of what they, they told me, they described it as the extreme move, where you get up and you not only move, but you move to a new language that you may not speak, you move to a new way to dine, you move to a new set of electricity, how it works, you move to a new water system, you move to all kinds of stuff that you don't have in your own country, and they go with you and film your adaption to that. Well, the couple that did this, the young lady is a born-and-raised Batavia girl, and her father was our deputy chief on the Batavia Fire Department. So about three or four days before they arrived in town, Mr. McGrath and myself were heavily contacted by Home and Garden, telling us that they were coming to Batavia, and first of all, they wanted me to sign off that they could film anything that they wanted to that was out on the street. So I signed off, you know, they, so they came downtown, and they were standing, I saw them on the Wilson Street Bridge, and they were at the Riverwalk, and they were over at the library, and they were filming things in Batavia, showing what the town looked like. Then they asked for permission to stage a going-away party, because the couple had come back to the United States for a brief period to go to a business meeting, and so they brought their family with them, so it was Deputy Chief Poole, was the deputy chief, it was his daughter, and so they asked permission if, to give it some kind of a local resemblance, and since this young lady, that's the mother here, had grown up in the Batavia Fire Department, Chief Dyke was nice enough to accommodate them, letting them host a party inside the East Side Batavia Fire Station. And so it was a party of bottles of water, and that's, you know, we didn't have to have any alcohol or cookies or anything. And so the family here, and both the husband and the wife's families came to this party, and along with a number of the girls' friends from the town, so Home and Garden had this real strict problem about anybody that was gonna be on this film had to sign a release form. And so they walked in, and there was, I think she told me, she, the gal that was the producer, she said she had 21 forms, and right away, I saw her going around the room counting, including the little children, and she says, "Oh, my goodness gracious, there's 55 people here. I need more forms." So the fire department used their Xerox machine and made them some more forms, and then they had some more people arrive, and before they would turn on the cameras, we had to get more forms signed, because everybody had to be indoctrinated in this thing. So they went ahead and they did a toast, a goodbye to the couple, although they had already left, you know, it was kind of a portrayal. And I guess they went to the house that they had moved from, down on Green Pheasant, and they went in and they staged like they were packing some boxes and crates and whatever have you. And so I said to the producer, "Well, when's all this going to show up?" And she says, "Well, it's gonna be a while, because they produce this stuff in midtown Manhattan and New York City," and that's where she had flown out here from. And they had a camera crew of three members with them, and she thought it's probably gonna be in late fall, or maybe even next winter, before this thing finally gets aired, but she supposedly is going to email me with the information about when this is going to be portrayed, and I'll be able to share it with you and the rest of the community, whoever may be interested, 'cause I think, from what I could see, and I was, I had some other things going on at my house that day, so I couldn't follow these people around, but what I saw when I visited the fire station was that they were fairly well organized. So I have a pretty strong belief that Batavia's gonna be portrayed pretty favorably in this thing. But I'm amazed at talking to different people, this thing has widespread following. I mean, there's a lot of people that really watch this channel with some regularity, and it's, I guess, a worldwide channel, because in Italy, they put this show on in all the languages, in Italian, and in France, it's in French, and they're all over the, I guess in Japan, it's in Japanese, and so I don't know how it all will come out, but we got, I think, international coverage here, coming to Batavia, Illinois. The big thing about them in planning this whole thing was, is that Mr. McGrath and I were sworn to secrecy that we not tell anybody that they were coming, 'cause as the producer told me, their nightmare is, is that when the word gets out in a community that they're there, that all kinds of people show up and want to get into the picture. And I mean, she says, "It could be, if we had told this town that you were doing this, we could've had 500 people standing around here wanting to get into the mix on this thing." So they were, I, we did a thing here a few years ago with Good Morning America on ABC, and they were the same thing. "Well, we're coming, we wanted to..." They did a thing out here in the Riverwalk, and they, again, it was top secret, nobody knows about this, 'cause if we tell them, we'll be overwhelmed, and we won't be able to do it, because there'll just be way too many people here for us to perform this thing. So I think maybe some of the neighbors down on Green Pheasant kind of wandered around outside the house and maybe got wind of what was happening in there, but they were photographing, and as I say, they were, one of their big challenges was, they were trying to find someplace that they had, could have the word "Batavia" that they could use, and so I think Bill and I both suggested that they go to the West Side Fire Station and just shoot the water tower behind the station. And I don't think, Bill, did they ever tell, I don't think they did that. They ended up, I think, up on the lawn at the Homestead at Route 31 in Fabian, and they filmed that sign there as kind of their name of where these people were moving from. So that's the story of Home and Garden in Batavia, but they will be airing this sometime, and as they say, it was about a, it was, near as I can tell, it was just pure family entertainment, because they just loved it. There was all these little kids running around, and their big concern was, "Who's this kid flown to? We gotta get Mom and Dad to sign off on this kid being in this show." So it was kind of fun to see that, and I just want to thank Chief Dyke and Chief Binker from the Fire Department, 'cause they both came in, volunteered their time to stand there and kind of oversee this thing, and I think they certainly made us look like we were most friendly and cooperative, and I think Home and Garden left Batavia with a good taste in their mouth about what the town was all about. Chief, you got anything to add to this?
I'm trying to stay out of the game.
You had to sign a form too, though, didn't you? Yeah. Anybody that was in, we moved the ambulance out, or we put the ambulance in off the back of the station, so they used the bay where the ambulance was working. So it was a pretty big area, but they definitely were adamant about getting all this permission signed, and I had to sign that it was okay to shoot pictures in Batavia and whatever, so I, it was all positive. So I'm anxious to see it myself, is to see what, how they portray us, but I think it will be good. So that's what I got. So, no other business, Alderman Brown, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
We adjourn the City Council meeting.
Second. Move by Alderman Brown, Second of all, Alderman O'Brien. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.